...session for the purpose of discussing employee contract and the open meeting law complaint dated May 16, 2019. I'll entertain a motion to enter executive session to discuss strategy with respect to the open meeting law complaint dated May 16, 2019, filed with the Attorney General's Office by Attorney Robert Nizlik, and to discuss employee contracts in respect to the negotiation of an employee agreement with the new town manager.
So moved?
Second.
Before the roll call vote under executive session, let me state, in executive session, the Select Board will discuss with town council its response to the open meeting law complaint dated May 16, 2019, filed with the Attorney General's Office by Mr. Nizlik. Discussing this matter in open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the town. The Board will also discuss employee contracts with respect to the negotiation of an employee agreement with the two town manager, and doing so in open session may have a detrimental effect on the negotiation position, negotiating position of the town. Would the Court please call a roll?
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hodgekiss?
Aye.
Mr. Lawson?
Aye.
Myself, Linda Escamino?
Aye.
I note that the vote was five to zero in favor, so the Board will convene an open session for open meeting law training at 6:00 P.M. Thank you. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the continuation of the June 3 Select Board. For the next hour or so, we are going to be talked to about open meeting law, and to my right, it's Mina Macario, who is town council, and would you introduce yourself, please?
Christina Marshall, also Anderson Krieger.
Well, we're delighted you're here, and I guess, Mina, I'll turn it over to you.
Sure. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I have a copy of just a packet you could follow along for the Board. We are delighted to be here. We are doing this open meeting law training, and it is something we do for all the towns that we represent on occasion, so that every couple of years. It's a good practice to have these kinds of trainings because the law changes, or the interpretations of the law change. And in this particular case, I believe there are two very new Board members, welcome. I think we did that with you in session before. I met each of you separately at town meeting. And actually, three since I've been there since we've done the last time we've had anything like that. So we wanted to go through some of the best practices essentially for the open meeting law. These are things that are coming up across the state for both local and state entities, and that you should be aware of. Some of this will apply most directly to the Select Board. Some will apply to your other boards and committees. We're partly giving this presentation here not in lieu of working with other boards, but because of your role with the town and the town manager office, role with those different boards. So I want to just also say that training, as we'll get to, is one of the exceptions to the open meeting law you've chosen to put on the agenda tonight. So because it's been noticed and it's part of the open meeting, certainly you should just treat it as you would otherwise. You take minutes, and if there are questions, if you might please interrupt me. We try to cover a lot, and I will try to keep this till before 7:00 P.M.
We're doing this for a lot of reasons, but one, we also sent a note to various committees and boards in town, letting them know that it was going to be broadcast this evening. I don't think that's sort of what we have in the audience, but so that people in various committees could listen at home if they wanted to.
And then there'll be reports.
Okay. Well, in that case, we'll do an even better job than we might do. So, all right. So just starting off with the cases, you see the first, very first page of the packet we have here. All public bodies, including the Select Board, have to post notice of any events. Meetings and deliberations within them should be open to the public unless there's a valid purpose for executive session, we're going to get to those purposes. And minutes must be kept for all meetings, published in a timely fashion. Timely depends in a lot of ways on the nature of the board and how often the boards are being, like, so frequently, you should publish more frequently than a committee that might need quarterly out every other year, et cetera.
Yes. You switch to the next page. The open meeting law essentially requires that all meetings of a public body must be open to the public. There are three really important key definitions that we'll go to in a little bit more detail here. First is public body, second is what is a meeting, and the final is what is a deliberation? So we'll start with the definition of a public body. This means every town board, every commission, any committees or subcommittees that are created, elected, appointed, or otherwise officially constituted to serve a public purpose. This does include advisory subcommittees, such as a search committee. It does not include staff meetings. It does also, also does not include informal bodies that may include members of a board or a committee that are simply assisting staff in managerial, staff-like duties.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So this has come up, I don't recall it coming up here, but it's come up at other committee meetings. If we were talking about some issue in a public meeting, and we needed some kind of work done to get it organized, if we turned to a, not a quorum of the committee, but for example, I asked Susan and Linda, could you get together and figure something out and get it back to the Board so we could do it?
As a subcommittee or not? That's a great question. The Attorney General's Office has issued a lot of opinions on this, and the line depends very much on what the task is and the nature of that particular grouping. So if it's a task that a staff member could have done on their own. So for instance, if Kate is authorized to negotiate a contract with a particular entity, but she would like some input from, from a Select Board member, she could sign on her own, she could do the negotiating on her own. We've asked Linda and Susan to help. That wouldn't, under normal circumstances, be a subcommittee. That would be assistance to a staff member in that capacity. Similar with, you're drafting something, but there's really going to be no further action on it. They're not authorized to do anything on their own. They can't act for the board. They're not acting on behalf of the board. They're sort of doing the prep work to bring it back to a public meeting or appropriate session.
I'm going to give you very explicit, so later this evening, which is actually going to happen, later this evening, we're going to be talking about next step for long-range plans, our long-range plan to vision Concord and Town. And I'm going to ask Susan, with my help, to put together a charge for a committee that we might decide to cede in the future.
So you're putting the draft charge together, I suspect, and I guess I recommend, that charge is not going to go out from the subcommittee.
No, it's going to come back.
It's going to come back to you. And so I think that would not be a subcommittee, it's just a working group at that point. The phraseology, I think, is, can get a little tricky because where towns have gotten themselves in some trouble is saying, well, we called it a task group or a working group. And that, the name doesn't really matter. It's sort of the formality, the level of formality, and it's a little bit of a gray area exactly where that line is. But if it's truly to do the work, I think that it is really a working group as opposed to a subcommittee or to do something else.
I understand the notion that having to come back here rather than...
That takes, that's a big factor that the AG's office, when they interpret these, that provision looks at, the fact that it has to go back to the full Board. For instance, to use an example, like I believe with the town manager's search, there was a separate committee. The presence of two Select Board members on it, when you're part of, acting as part of that committee, you're part of that committee. However, some towns have chosen, instead of having a committee, they've had a subcommittee of the Board, less than a quorum, go out and just do the search with the consultant. In that case, because you're taking the process from the pool of candidates to calling it down to the last three finals before bringing it to the Board, you have enough authority and sort of decision-making power in that process that you would have been a subcommittee. So what you sort of ended up tasking your search committee that you were part of, but not the only part of, that's a subcommittee. Would have been a subcommittee if you didn't let it go.
And I think that's a key point, is the authority that you're giving those, that
group of people and what they're doing.
So if they're acting on behalf...
Right.
So that's a subcommittee.
Right.
Okay. Thank you, Senator.
No, no, that's great. So next key definition here is a meeting, and that's defined by the open meeting law as a deliberation by a public body with respect to any matter within the body's jurisdiction. We'll get back to the definition of deliberation. That's not as obvious as it might seem, but before we get there, we wanted to list these exceptions. A quorum of the Board or any subcommittee or other committee can attend a public or private gathering, you know, within the town, you can appear socially together, again, as long as you're not deliberating at those gatherings. At an onsite inspection, I think Mina wanted to give a little bit more detail about that, that we can come back to. A quorum can attend a meeting of another public body and certainly observe another meeting. A meeting of a state quasi-judicial board or commission held for the sole purpose of making a decision required in a adjudicatory proceeding. And finally, of course, you can attend town meeting without that being considered an open meeting. And again, all of these exceptions only apply as long as you are not deliberating at that meeting. So just going back briefly to the onsite inspection.
Yeah, I want to touch on that one, the town meeting, because that one can be a little tricky, too. So the onsite inspection, it comes up probably less for this Board, but since there are other boards might be interested, conservation, NRC in this case, planning board, zoning board, et cetera. There are times where there's no substitute for actually seeing a site, that you're going to be thinking about, you have an application pending. A practice that sort of avoids inadvertent deliberation is to go out there, maybe a staff member with one member at a time, or two members if that's less than a quorum. However, the open meeting law does allow you to do an onsite inspection with the full Board, which sometimes can be useful, can be useful for being able to see it together, see it on the same weather conditions, especially for something like the NRC, or sometimes where it's difficult to get to. A school committee needs to see a project under construction, or a building committee needs to see a project under construction. The important thing to remember is you can't deliberate while you're there. You can ask questions to sort of gather facts, clarify things, otherwise it would be a not-so-useful site inspection, unless you're a very good NRC member and can tell your vegetative plates apart. But you're, you're, you're kind of pushing past that if you start talking about the merits of the matter, the sort of exchanging opinions about what you're seeing on the site. So because of that, if you're going to do an onsite inspection, our recommendation would be to certainly have staff there taking notes of any questions that are asked, who asked them, and the responses, so that there's a clear record of what happened. And although it is an exception, you could always note that you are going to do it and have that inspection. To the extent that the public is able to attend, you can welcome the public to the inspection. However, it's understood that sometimes that's not possible. If you're, again, traversing through a weather, you may not be able to bring everybody who can. Yeah. So that is one exception to note. The town meeting exception gets, there's sort of a lot of misunderstanding of what it does and does not do. The AG's office has no jurisdiction, and neither the courts enforce the open meeting law with respect to town meeting. So town meeting itself, the idea is it's open enough, it has its own set of procedures, there's enough notice going on. Deliberations at town meeting, so if you have to caucus to decide, if there's an amendment on the floor of town meeting, the Board wants to take a position on it, you huddle together at the table, that's not, that's fine. That's at town meeting, that deliberation's exempt. However, meetings in anticipation of town meeting should be open. Meetings, you know, at the night of town meeting, what you do post should be posted. That's the right way to do it. Documents, the warrant, the finance committee, the report, the planning board, their reports, all of that should be treated just like any other.
So regular business should be treated like any...
Exactly. Yeah, it's sort of the reactors.
There's an amendment to a motion, and we need to have a point of view on it.
We can deliberate. You can deliberate that, that's right. And part of it is that you will deliberate with a couple hundred people watching you. Now, you can, you can certainly deliberate in open. Some towns have different procedures on it. You have an open town meeting, so it's a little bit different, but in some towns, there'll be listserv of town meeting members. That is also open to, that's also not subject to the open meeting law. However, most Board members choose not to add to it, just to avoid mixing the regular business.
And the final key definition here is a deliberation. So again, the definition is an oral or written communication through any medium, including email, between or among a quorum of a public body on any public business within its jurisdiction. So the first key point here is it's any communication deliberation. You might read that and think that it's something that you're ultimately going to be voting on, but it's really any matter or any issue that's before you. It doesn't have to culminate in a, in a vote necessarily. Email and other online communications can be tricky. They can be certainly subject to open meeting law if there's an email circulated with a quorum of the Board. That also applies to group text messages or communications on this, the rest of this list here. So we have listed blogs, YouTube, Twitter, Facebook, Skype chat rooms. Of course, we're not trying to, the open meeting law isn't running into your First Amendment rights to communicate on these mediums, but again, if you have a quorum of the Board that is, for example, all posting on a Facebook comment together, then you run into open meeting law issues. And again, you can't simply send one email to individual members of a Board, and since there isn't a quorum present on any one of those emails, consider yourself compliant. Under the law, that constitutes a serial deliberation. The AG and courts have said that that violates the open meeting law as well. That and a lot of other kind of exception areas kind of fall into this rule that I like to think of if you're trying to think, if a Board's trying to think of ways it can circumvent the open meeting law, it's probably going to be a violation of the open meeting law if you're trying to make your life easier. That's a different story.
But it is for example, if I'm communicating via email, for example, with Jane about an item on the agenda.
Yes, so that's the next page. So exceptions. It is okay to send emails to distribute a meeting agenda, again, with no comment, but just the agenda, or to coordinate scheduling, procedural information, or to share reports or documents. But again, don't share those with opinions, just, you know, you can share that information.
Well, I'm going to go back, because my question was, I understand that.
Yes.
There's an item on the agenda, and I write to Jane, only Jane, I don't copy anybody else. So I think this is really allied to.
I think, in that case, that communication itself isn't a deliberation. If Jane shares that with Terry, that becomes a deliberation.
If I forward it, then I...
So that's, that's why you have to be very careful.
But if she writes back and says, I agree, or I don't agree.
That is, it's not going to a quorum of the Board, so it's not deliberation. But again, you just have to be careful.
But I can't send from around and have the same conversation.
Exactly. So that's not, not just a forwarding, that's right. So if Linda, even if Linda doesn't know that, but you know, but you do, Mike, yeah, that makes a problem.
And then, if Mike then decides, as Chair, he's going to change the agenda and says it's Andrew based on our...
Well, since Andrew's not a member of the Board, that doesn't change the deliberation. If, well, you do have to be careful on this, is another question. Is if Andrew then says, okay, we're going to change the agenda, I bet Linda, Susan, and Terry are going to want to know why. Let me forward that communication between them. That's a problem, because now you've brought Andrew into it next to start.
And on that point, it's still a violation if Andrew just forwards the email, and Terry, and Linda, and Susan don't respond. It's the act of, of the sharing of the information, that's the deliberation.
So I have a question. If there's an item on the agenda, and one member will say, I think I have some facts on, you know, item 10 or whatever, but it's not in a report or a document, it's something that I know from experience or whatever. Like, say it's in my neighborhood, and I saw it happen, or I don't know what, but I don't have a report or a document, but I want everybody on the Board to know this fact, but I don't, I don't want to get into deliberation. So how does that fact get distributed?
It's a great question. That is, comes up in the bolter event.
Well, not an opinion, but just like, you know, something happened.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I was going to say, that's definitely close to that line, and it goes back to what Mina was saying earlier about onsite inspections and sharing just information versus opinion.
Right.
And you just have to, I think, consider whether or not that fact crosses that line or not, and I didn't know if you wanted to bring bolter into that as well.
Yeah, so in a minute, we're going to talk about some of the best practices for that kind of deliberation. Because I think, just to be fair to all of you, we're all humans, and reporting information like that, the line between what we perceive as a fact and not is very hard.
Exactly.
So we need to be careful with it. So there's a case decided 2018, one of the big developments in this area, called Bolter versus Board of Selectmen of Wayland, which clarified a lot of what deliberation means. It clarified it partly by clarifying that the law is vague and hard to interpret on these issues. The court there held that any circulation of documents containing opinions of members, even if there's no back and forth, constitutes deliberation. So again, we're not getting the facts just yet, but just anything that gives an opinion of even one member, deliberation's just in a sense. In that particular case, that's due to evaluations by the Board of Selectmen that were sort of compiled by the Chair, and then, here's, here's my compiled notes from what the rest of you told, it's sort of the chair. So the SJC, the court, in attempting to find a rule to make sense of the open meeting law, allowed distribution of that kind of document as long as they're contemporaneously posted online, available to the public. So to get back to your question, Terry, one solution to that, whether it is a report with opinions or just a set of facts, is if it's worth telling your Board members, and you want them to think about it in advance in the public session, the town can post it in the meeting paper at the same time that it, either post the agenda, or if it's something that pops up after the agenda, as soon as, as you tell it to everybody else. So for instance, you have a report, you know, you're leading up the town meeting, let's say the Chair has worked with us on the most recent version of the motions document and wants to make sure the Board has it. That's a 50-page document, you don't want to be looking, sitting there and reading it at the meeting. As long as it's posted at the same time as it's shared by email, you're, you're fine at that point. That set of facts, you know, I'd like, I'd like the Board to consider that. You might send it to Andrew, he might post it at the same time. The other option, of course, is waiting until the meeting to share, share that. If you're not, if you're sort of unsure if it's fact or opinion, that's sort of a safer, safer option. It gets a little bit trickier if it's going to be something that would be discussed in executive session later, because you may not be able to post that particular meeting. But the good news is with executive, you know, sort of the counterweight to that is with your, when you're in executive session, you tend to have a little less reading of sort of a long, complex document. If you do, you can sort of allocate the time for that a little bit differently. So I still would not recommend sharing it out in advance if it can't be posted. The other recommendations on what to do to distribute that kind of document is, remember that the opinions are the opinions of Board members. So you can, to some degree, involve staff and Boards that have staff to benefit from this. You know, if you have edits to a report, edits to whatever, a document, a letter that's going to go on behalf of the Board, those can be shared with staff. Staff can collect those and make the edits. What they can't do, they can then share the final, and again, post that contemporaneously ahead of the meeting, or bring that sort of final collated copy to the Board in the executive session, that's what we're going to do.
So they have, so they could understand that. Do they have to post it contemporaneously? That's a good idea, I get that.
They have to post it contemporaneously if it's going to include opinions, and the other Board members are going to see it.
So go back to a duty charge, and we've chatted about it, and at the end of our discussion, I say, okay, we're going to deal with this on our next meeting. If you've got any corrections, your additional comments, send them to Andrew.
Sure.
Andrew, please organize these and get a clean copy back to all of us.
When he gets that clean back, copy back to all of you, he should post it contemporaneously. But in between, you know, Mike sends a couple of comments, Linda sends a couple of comments, Andrew says, Linda, I'm not sure what you meant by X. That's fine. What you have to avoid is, you know, Linda, you should know, you know, what Andrew shouldn't be saying is, Linda, your comment doesn't match Susan's and Mike's, you might want to change it. Then, then at that point, you're starting to bring it into the deliberation. But as long as you're sort of collecting information and then distributing it publicly, that's fine.
Got it.
And it's, that's sort of the bolter answer to what, what to do with deliberation, so that the public has fair notice of it, and the Board has an efficient way to go about doing its business, because Boards, you know, neither the public nor the Boards want to watch the Board read the entire town meeting warrant for the first time in the spot. It's not, it's not good for the board structure. The last point on this is Christina, they actually already went over, is just be careful with email and sort of the chronic methods. Platforms like Google Docs and so on are wonderful for a lot of sectors, and not great for governmental entities, because they, they do have this sort of ability to, too many cooks at once, being able to go in at the same time. It also can be problematic if you're trying to figure out what draft was available to the public at one time. So I think we've said enough about email, so I'll leave it at that, unless there's questions. Before we move on from deliberation, any other questions on that?
Okay, so the next key part of the open meeting law is notice and posting of a meeting. So here, the town clerk posts notice. Here Concord has been approved to post all notices on ConcordMA.gov, which it does. Those notices must contain the date, time, and place of the meeting, date and time the notice was posted. There is a 48-hour requirement. Again, town clerk takes care of all those timing issues, but that just confirms that that requirement has been met. And the notice must also include the topics that the Chair reasonably anticipates, which could be a tricky area. That must be specific enough to advise the public of the issues to be discussed, so the public's aware of what's going to be going on at that meeting, and can determine whether or not they would like to attend. Boilerplate disclaimer is not enough. The Chair doesn't need to have an exhaustive list of everything that potentially might arise, but reasonably anticipates doesn't, isn't an opportunity to kind of obfuscate what you think might arise, but don't, don't really want to disclose. There, we will get into this later, where there are notices, including executive session. You can and should be a little bit more cautious about what is on the agenda for those items, but again, we'll discuss that in the executive session section.
One good practice that does come up a lot, again, a lot more for some other Boards, if, if you're a land use Board, you know, your application, the list of applications that you're reacting on should include the address or some way for the public to know whether that's an address that they have involved in it. When you're looking at, this one can be a little tough because of just the grind and sort of schedule of town meeting, but as you're voting on town, on town meeting articles and recommend what positions you'll take, if you know you're going to take up a particular set of articles one night and then others another night, it might be good to identify those ahead of time, so that somebody can look at the warrant and say, do I want to be there when the Board talks about Article 27, or are they religiously looking up the zoning articles that I might not be as interested in?
Even though that could change, as it has.
Right, and so you may still want to have another, you know, somewhere saying, you know, other town meeting articles, with any action, or some other language, so that you have some flexibility for that, for the stuff that comes up last minute. That's right, because that is what makes it hard, is you may not know that the planning Board just did something on their article, that you have to react to, the school committee changed something, and you have to handle this.
And let me just ask you, so what happens, I think I'm, but is the Chair reasonably anticipating, or sometimes we might forget something, or something comes up that we hadn't anticipated?
Right.
I understand if it's a controversial thing, and that's government call, I suppose, but if it's controversial, you should postpone it, get it scheduled. What if it's a mundane thing?
My rule of thumb is to sort of think about whether it has turned into an emergency because it wasn't anticipated. So to give you an example, we had a set of, actually, one meeting earlier this year in one of our other towns that had an election scheduled for a Monday morning. in one of our other towns that had an election scheduled for a Monday morning in early spring. It was about to snow. On 48 hours in advance of the meeting that ended up happening on Sunday night, the weather pattern didn't tell us it was about to snow. If we hadn't had the meeting and talked about what would happen at the election, we would, you know, the snowstorm would have blindsided us. We got as much notice out as possible. When was anticipated, but after the 48-hour notice. That's sort of the proper way to do it. If, another one that comes up sometimes is somebody put in a license for a one-day liquor license for an event through no fault of the applicant, town staff didn't see it in time, it didn't make the notice. That may be something the chair doesn't reasonably anticipate, and there's no other scheduled time that you could do, use no other time to schedule it. You're essentially putting the applicant in the place of not having the license. You may, at that point, decide that that's something that wasn't anticipated. That's a tougher call, it's not truly an emergency, but it's an emergency for them. The best practice is if it's something that comes up that was either forgotten or really came up in that 48-hour window that really needs to be discussed immediately, is to discuss as little as possible of it while being able to schedule another time. So I will say, true emergencies like the snowstorm, boards will find a time to meet, right? It's sort of the mundane.
So if you're scheduling another meeting?
As much as you can, yeah. And if you need to acknowledge a letter that came in from someone saying, you know, this is going to happen in 24 hours, you need to do something about it. You may acknowledge the letter and spend, since scheduling is exempt from the open meeting, while you could use the time in an open session setting, when can we get on a calendar ASAP and talk about it?
So next, once you're finally in your open meeting, first rule is that the chair controls the meeting. With respect to public participation, the chair is always welcome to invite that. With the chair's permission, anyone from the public can address a meeting. The chair can also request that there is no public participation. If somebody continues to disrupt a meeting after being asked to stop disrupting, you may, the chair may order that person to leave, and the chair may remove that person from the meeting. Note that if the board has a notation on the agenda or has generally opened up a meeting for public participation, the board cannot then shut down the meeting for public participation. Once you've made it an open forum, again, this is more of a First Amendment issue than anything else, you can't control the content, again, unless somebody is being unruly or disorderly.
You can, however, I mean, this is another reason that the agenda items should be as specific as possible, is to advise the public of what it is you're going to take up. So there's a difference between saying, this is an open forum to hear issues in the town.
Right.
Very broad, and we are discussing the new town manager contract. A comment about something else may not be germane to that. So it's a matter of setting the agenda versus trying to control content, which you can't do.
Right. And next with, I'm sorry to interrupt, Susan.
So are you saying that if we have a section for public comment on our agenda, that you don't have to put that, is that what you're saying?
There is actually no requirement to open up any meeting for public comment. A lot of towns do, it's a good practice for getting feedback, it's one opportunity to hear feedback, so a lot of towns do. I'll give you an example from a recently litigated case not involving any of our towns. School committee had exactly that on their agenda. The, a member of the public, several members of the public came to complain about how the school was dealing with bullying in that school system, and very sad stories about some of the results of it. The interim superintendent at the time was not happy with some of the line of it and asked the chair to shut it down. The court decided sort of two things. One, that the chair probably went too far in not waiting to hear what that member had to say, because what they said on the agenda was, it's called "public speaks," so it's very open. On the other hand, the chair, the court did find that it was reasonable for the chair to interrupt and say, you know, your issue is, if you were starting to talk about a particular staff member or particular student, those issues under the school committee's charge actually are delegated to school principals and faculty, and assuming school principals and superintendents. So they're not really the purview of the school committee. The chair could say, that's not really something that we have any jurisdiction over, and ask for that person just to, you know, wrap up their comments or go back to a topic that is germane to what they have jurisdiction on. So it can be a little bit tricky, but that's not, so the short answer to the question is, it's not required, it's a good practice, and, you know, you just need to be aware that the things are within your purview. If someone comes complaining about a board that you don't control, or it's not really something that you necessarily need to keep letting me part of.
Okay, next, the public has a right to record any open meeting. Again, it's not applied to executive session, but open meetings, as long as the person who desires to record the meeting notifies the chair, the chair informs the public at the outset that it will be recorded and that it's reasonably regulated to avoid any disruption of the meeting.
I always try to say, the chair always tries to say at the beginning of our meetings that they're being recorded, but what if somebody else wants to record? Do I have to acknowledge that separately?
I would, if you acknowledge it at the same time as you're acknowledging the general recording, I think that would be sufficient.
The recording is generally, and Mr. So-and-so is also recording.
Right. The next issue is remote participation. So members of a public body can participate remotely as long as the select board has voted to adopt a policy for that by the AG. Concord did that in 2013, it's part of the packet that you all have, there's a policy set out for those rules. The more important general rules here are that you still have to have a physical quorum of the board itself present at the meeting. The chair must always be physically present. Everybody participating remotely must be audible, and if you have anybody participating remotely, you have to do all votes by roll call.
Go back to number two of the chair, so if I happen to be out of town, and we have a select board meeting, and everyone else is here, I can't participate?
Correct.
Yeah, and you said we can't share them?
Right.
Well, so he would have designated.
Or designated someone as chair.
Correct. Right. Right, and that person would be, have to be physically there.
And then I can't participate.
Right, as long as you've met all these rules.
So that means he would be designating the chair remotely?
No.
You're not always going to know in advance? I mean, most times, you know.
I think that would be the order of business as the meeting begins, that if I was not here and you were here, you would call for a motion of some kind, and somebody would get appointed chair.
Right.
I'm going to go over the, a couple of slides on minutes. That is often something that towns with staff capacity, that with the staff, although again, for some of the boards that might be listening at home or watching this later, some board members may be involved. The requirements for minutes are intended to have a record of the meeting, whether it's open or executive session, I'll get to the difference, what happens with the minutes, that allows somebody who wasn't there to have a reasonable idea of what happened. It does not need to be a transcript or a blow-by-blow of every single thing that was said, but it should apprise somebody of sort of the key takeaways. I think if you're trying to tell a story about that meeting, what would you want to know? You know, various sides of the opinion, their express, et cetera. Certainly needs to have date, time, place, members present, a record of all votes, discussion of actions. The new open meeting laws of the last decade also requires summary of the matters discussed, so that, again, that sort of listing should follow from the agenda. A list of documents used, which means documents are actually referred to or sort of part of the meeting, so the fact that someone says, I think under Chapter 48, we're going to do this, you don't now need to include a copy of Chapter 48 and all sorts of records. On the other hand, if you were discussing a draft letter, that letter is now one of the documents, it's an exhibit to that meeting. And if there's remote participants, it needs to be clear who is remote.
And would those documents be those documents that relate to the agenda as it was published, or?
Not necessarily, so if there were, certainly the ones that come with the agenda, in fact, some of those may have not been, so they've been there and never referred to or never used. If someone brings, but let's use Terry's example from earlier, if rather than conveying that set of facts to Andrew beforehand, she said, because I know this particular issue in my neighborhood, here's a package of photos I took and a list of, you know, the 10 facts, and she brings it with her. Actually, a really good example, this, I brought this with me, this wasn't on the agenda, this packet is now something that's clearly used in this meeting.
And will post it.
And you'll post it, so that'll be part of your minutes for this meeting, is the town council presentation about the event.
What about if somebody from the public, either on the agenda as presenter or as in public comments, brings a document?
Similar standard, if it was sort of just received, and if they, you know, if they said, if it was during the public comments that I'd like to give you my letter, I think that was used. They meant for the board to receive it, they meant for the board to look at it. Whether or not you actually did, I think at that point it really was used. If the member of the public sort of leaves it behind, that's, you know, never got referred to in their comments or never got to you as a board, that wasn't necessarily used.
Let me ask you a very picky question. We'll post this tomorrow, but when the minutes are completed for this meeting and we approve it, this should be in session?
Exactly, yeah.
And then physically when they're, or electronically when they are posted, this should show up again?
That's right, that's right, because thinking about the historical record of it later, if someone wants to know what happened at this meeting, well, the minutes will reflect that we gave a presentation about this, and someone's going to want to know, well, what did that thing look like? And clearly, there's a document that you'll refer to.
It could be a hyper loop though?
Certainly can be, yeah. Another thing that the town has done is adopted public, I guess, electronic notice, and so that also applies for minutes. Minutes sort of become, this will be the next thing on the top page, what happens to the minutes in relation to the public record law. Meeting minutes should be created timely so that they're not lagging far behind, you still have a good memory of what happened. The new AG regs say within 30 days are three regular meetings, whichever is later, this is what I was getting to earlier, if you meet regularly, you should be doing it within 30 days. If you're a board that meets every three months, you know, obviously that you can't do within 30 days. You don't need to schedule anything just for minutes, although sometimes some boards do. The public records are subject to disclosure, the meetings are, minutes are public records subject to disclosure, under the public record law. So unless they're otherwise exempt by the Public Records Act, they're subject to disclosure, even if they're still in draft form. The notes and recordings to prepare them are also public records, as long as they're being taken for that purpose. You know, a note that a staff member jots down because you said something like during the meeting, but, well, actually, I need to remember to tomorrow when I get in the office, think about that, that may not be, that may still be exempt from disclosure as a personal note of a staff member or a board member for that matter. However, you know, Andrew's notes about the meeting, if, are still public records, if they turn, they don't become the official minutes of the meeting until you told them that they're drafts for whatever purpose they have at that point. So that's for open session minutes. I want to, we're going to talk separately about executive session minutes and executive session general nets.
The chair looks like they have twelve.
Okay, well, here's what we'll do, we'll focus most of the rest of the time on the executive session process. I'll tell you what else is inherent in the board very quickly, which is the sort of enforcement process, which you should be aware of with the board level and the AGs and court level. We'll go over that, but I think that the key part, we'll focus the seven minutes on executive session enforcement.
Yeah, I mean, I think the key part of enforcement is, if you get something, a complaint, notify town council first, and we'll cover more details.
That's right, that's exactly. So there are, executive session is a procedure that is permitted under the open meeting law. It is subject to the open meeting law, it's not an exception, so it's important to keep that in mind. It's only available for ten purposes, and there's a very specific process for it that is outlined in the statute. First, you have to convene an open session. Even if it's the first thing on your agenda, you have to convene an open session. It must be on a meeting notice that you will go into executive session. The reasonably anticipated issue comes up sometimes, you realize as the conversation starts, well, this really belongs in the executive session. It's not a good idea to use that exemption then. In fact, I would strongly discourage you, instead, schedule an executive session at another time. The chair has to state the purpose of the executive session and all subjects that may be discussed without compromising the purpose of it. So, and we'll get to that with specific purposes. And you have to announce whether the session will reconvene at the end of executive session, an open session, which is something you did tonight, for instance, when you started the meeting. To go into executive session, you need a roll call vote, so you need to state the name and vote of every member. You need a majority vote to go into executive session, that has to be written in minutes. The executive session should have its own set of minutes, and all votes within executive session have to be by roll call, if you take a vote. And you have to limit the purpose for which it was called. If there's an executive session tonight, for instance, I believe there are two different purposes noted on the agenda, that's okay, you don't have to come out and back in, but you need to note both golden and two. So, the purposes, and I won't focus on every single one of these, but I will go over some of the highlights. Discussing the reputation, character, health, et cetera, of an individual, there are some nuances to that about the rights of the individual to be present or not, so that's, if they're going to do one like that, you should speak to the town's HR director, who will either speak to the labor council union to see what's appropriate. Strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations, collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. That's not all contract negotiations, not every single contract, these are very specific sort of employment contracts. This is a good example, Christina mentioned earlier, about the notice, how specific a notice has to be. There's no surprise when you're negotiating with a collective bargaining unit that you are negotiating a contract with it. Therefore, the executive session notice should say, which you need your negotiating, there's no reason to surprise. The third, sort of, this is a strategy for collective bargaining or litigation. For this one and the other ones marked and read on these two pages, you have to explain when you're going to executive session that going into executive session is necessary because holding an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the town, the chair has to declare that. Again, what level of detail on the notice? If it's active litigation that has been filed with town, you know, it's publicly filed, you can state, you should state in the notice what litigation is you're going to talk about. If you're acquiring a piece of property and you're in a purchase and sale agreement over it, you should talk about, you should list the property. On the other hand, you are looking for a property to serve a particular purpose in town, and for strategic reasons, you don't want to tip your hand, yet they were looking for those, that may be something where you don't disclose it, but you might disclose sort of the nature of the fact that you're looking at property. Same with litigation, if the town needs to take enforcement action or file affirmative litigation, to the extent to which you have to announce that differs. There's other ones, security personnel or devices, criminal misconduct, that doesn't happen often, thankfully. If it does, we can talk about it. Acquisition of real property, again, this is sort of if there's a detrimental effect. So if you can't take an eminent domain vote in executive session, if all you're doing is taking the vote, the body knows that you have the authority from the town meeting, et cetera. You can, however, before you take the vote, discuss, well, what's the appraisal coming out, what's the value of it? Do we really want to do this? What's the litigation risk that might be involved? And for some of those, maybe it might be important to, both threatened litigation is actually threatened, and value of property. One of the things I didn't mention on litigation is, what does it mean to have, it's for threatened or pending litigation. Threatened litigation is really, you think it's coming down the pike, you know, sue. It's not, it's a controversial project, and therefore, we think we might get sued someday. So it's a tough call, again, something to consult with the town manager's office and consult with us, or have us consult each other. Anything to add to those? We talked about one of, one of the other ones that hopefully we'll have to do for a little while, for my screening for employment, the screening can happen in executive session, that's protected. That's protect, to protect applicants and to make sure that public bodies can get good applicants who might not be ready to leave their job if they don't get interviews. However, the final interviews do have to be in open session, which is, you know, I understand happened a few weeks ago for the town manager's check. And there's a few other ones. Comply with grant, the law on grant and age requirements, a little bit of a broad one. One that comes up here, for instance, is the silent fund from time to time. You might say, hey, executive session notice, you're talking about the silent fund, you don't have to disclose who you're talking about. All right? That's the purposes of executive session. Any questions on that? Let's, we'll quickly turn to the minutes of it. You should disclose, post, publish, et cetera, the minutes, once doing so will no longer defeat the executive session purpose, unless disclosures otherwise exempt from the public records law, or is attorney-client privileged? And attorney-client sort of survives for all time. That's the, some of the purposes survive for all time. So what I mentioned about preliminary screening of candidates, just because you've picked a candidate doesn't mean that the other candidates want their name out there, it's potential town manager candidate, so you would not disclose that. You should review your executive session minutes periodically. The, it can be harder to remember that because you, you know, because they often can be exempt for a long time. You need to go back and check, is this purpose done? Have we bought that property? Is, you know, has the appraisal been shared with the other side at this point, and so on. The public can, a member of the public can request that review if it hasn't been happening, and that's listed here.
And just on that point, you can redact portions of the executive session minutes and release the rest. So for Mina's earlier example, if you went into executive session for two separate reasons, and one of the reasons is no longer an issue, the other one is a conversation with your attorney that will stay privileged forever, you can redact that portion and release the rest once that becomes appropriate.
Or we could even release the discussion of finalists candidates for town manager.
Yes.
Right.
Redact names.
Redact names, other than the three or four finalists, that's right. All right, I think the last couple of things are sort of, the complaint process, before that, there's, just, you should be aware, the town clerk takes care of this, but there's a certification process. Every two years, you have to go through training. The training that we just did actually counts as training, so probably if somebody's not already certified, could certify it. I would not recommend, I think folks who are watching on TV, I wouldn't count that as training just yet.
No, we'll have, we'll handle the training in fall, which wouldn't put it open meeting law.
Right. And, going over quickly to...
Yeah, so just very briefly on the complaint process, I'll, I'll leave a lot of this for you to just refer to on your own, but just a few important points. A complainant must file the, a complaint under the open meeting law with the town clerk and with the public body within thirty days of its discovery of the alleged violation. Again, that doesn't necessarily mean the date of the alleged violation. You can imagine, if there is an open meeting law violation, the whole point is that the public might not be aware of it on that day, so there's a little bit of extra time there. The public body is required to respond, to review the complaint, send a copy of it to the AG. And, you know, if they're, if, in the public body's opinion, there was no violation, explain why. If they do discover a violation, explain that as well, and what can be done to fix that. And again, on this point, once, once the public body has received a complaint, it's always easiest just to advise us as soon as possible. We can guide you through the rest of these kind of escalated complaint processes that I can skip over for time purposes now. I think, I don't know if you want to talk about Mina and intentional violations, or if you just want to switch over to...
I think we can quickly just, just note that there are, the AG's office, when they look at a complaint, and the courts when they look at a complaint, think about whether the violation's intentional, or sort of, because there's a lot to this law, a practice that should be corrected. And the AG, generally, the intentional violation is repeated conduct of someone that's been already explained to a board, especially by the attorney general's office in a formal response. The, so that is often what the attorney general has focused on. In the few times where they've ordered something, called extension, opposed to training, or sort of correction of a practice. So just something to be aware of. The, and the remedies that elicit here is what the AG can, they have a pretty broad scope of things they can recommend. Most of the time, the focus is on enhanced compliance going forward, and that is, because every, you know, I think the understanding is that there is a, boards, they're trying to do the right thing typically, and that is just helping understand it. The AG, for anybody's sake who's interested, we certainly can assist with finding these, has issued a lot of opinions over the years, and they're all publicly posted. It helps explain some of these nuances. They're all very fact-specific, so sometimes there's nothing directly on point to what board is facing, but it's always better to consult in advance if a thorny question comes up, rather than sort of try it out and see what happens.
What happens, I mean, as, as was discussed, the outside, the opening law changes over time. So trainings could happen, you know, your ex, there could be a big change that would not necessarily mean the entire board, in this case, slide board, but any board was up to date on the newest changes. And what does an open meeting law complaint need to, what guides it? In other words, is it the current law, or is it the law that was...
Sure, that's a good question. So the statute itself rarely changes, so that's, you know, that hasn't changed in nine or 10 years now. It is the statute itself. Now, there may be areas that have not been settled law, either from the AG's perspective or the courts. Bolter's a great decision, the AG's, a great example, excuse me. The AG's guidance actually conflicted somewhat with what the court ultimately found, and the AG revised it. In those kinds of situations where it's a big change like that, or a big clarification, that's our job to make sure that you and staff are aware of those changes, and you're doing things like this to train, or to, to look over what a process might be. That's one tool for that. You know, certainly, the Mass Municipal Association, the Mass Municipal Lawyers Association, both track those kinds of cases a lot. The cases in court happen very frequently, you know, actually have decided cases on the open meeting law, there's a handful. Attorney general's opinions are sort of constant. Ones affecting an individual town, there's only been, by, I mean, you're six or seven years now working with the town directly, it's probably a handful that have come for Concord specifically, and from the AG's office. And, you know, those, those opinions should be something that the town manager's office sort of has in mind, alerts on your senior staff, and, you know, we can certainly talk about other ways to do updates on a regular basis, but I wouldn't expect, for instance, that, well, of the updates we send to clients, it's not like only every year, maybe there's something that has really changed, come back.
To that point, though, I did deal, different town, not Concord, while the Bolter decision was pending, there was a, an open meeting law complaint, and it turned out, at the time, it was fine, and then Bolter made the issue that was complained about illegal. And the AG hadn't rendered a decision until Bolter came down, so in the decision, the AG noted, this is now a violation, there's, you know, the AG's guidance on this differed from the court case, so we're not going to hold you accountable, but know going forward that you will be held accountable. So they do certainly expect the ongoing education with changes to the law.
And it certainly can't be an intentional violation unless it's something, as majors will turn to happen that way.
That was unique, but...
Well, it's, thank Christina and Mina, thank you both for helping us better understand the open meeting law. They are a little complicated, but we appreciate you being here with us this evening, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anything else you need from me on the agenda to play with?
No, thanks, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So we're a couple minutes away, we're getting ourselves squared away. So the next item on our agenda is the approval of this town manager's contract.
Yes.
So I would be happy to entertain a motion.
I'm allowed to approve the contact for employment between, for the town manager between Stephen J. Prane and the town of Concord, Massachusetts, to be entered into, I believe this day, so on the third of June, twenty nineteen, by, between the town of Concord, Massachusetts, a municipal corporation acting by and through its select board, and Stephen J. Prane of 104 Crestview Circle, Long Meadow, Massachusetts, Mr. Prane.
Third time.
Second.
I think we'll have a roll call vote for this, if you call it all, man.
Sure.
It's a discussion. Will you please call it all?
Yes.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Mr. Lawson?
Aye.
Linda Escobedo, myself, aye.
So we have a new town manager?
We have a new town manager. And I'd like to thank the members of, again, the members of the town manager's research committee, and our consultants, MRI, for all of the work they did to bring files forward, and thanks to you for helping us get this done. Thanks very much. All right. The next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. It includes a town account warrant, gift acceptance, the Friends of Sleepy Hollow Cemetery for $2,350 to go to the Sleepy Hollow Cemetery gift account, the minutes of...
I can scratch that, they're still, they're not ready to tell you.
They haven't even finished the sentence in. One-day special license Concord Rotary Club on June 20th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at 11 Wheeler Road, wine and malt, Natalia Flatlay at 6:23, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. at 11 Wheeler Road, wine and malt, and the tour guide license renewals.
Move to approve the consent agenda is read?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll note that passed five to zero. Town manager's report, Ms. Hodges.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Kate Hodges, deputy town manager. Baker Ave closure is still happening. We had thought that, DPW had thought that they would be able to get through the work that needed to be done there, but we received a call from Rich Ray, the public works director, this evening, earlier this evening, before we convened, and it actually is going to be tomorrow and Wednesday. Essentially, there was a major culvert failure at the part of Baker Ave near Concord Green. There's a triple 36-inch culvert, and that rolls underneath the street, dealing with the drainage, and when they were going to do some work on the road, they noticed that the complete insides of it are all rotted out. So they actually needed to have the catch basin completely repaired, which is a major project. So they're replacing three culverts, and then replacing the head wall there. Tonight, they are plating it where it is so it can be passable and drivable during the evening, but they'll start again tomorrow, bright and early. They are expecting to be completed with all of the infrastructure underneath by the end of the day on Wednesday, and then paving will happen next week. So a bit of unanticipated delay there, but, but good that it was caught before anything terrible happens, so. The sidewalk at the mid-block crosswalk at Concord Green off Baker Ave is something else that's going to be taken underway while they're working on the culvert. It's about $6,200 additional to have a crosswalk right there, basically where the culvert is, into the Concord Green side, and that was determined to be a safety risk not having that, so that will be going along with a curb cut. On June 26th, the state dive team, for the fire, fire dive team, will be actually conducting their first ever training at White Pond. So it's not their first training ever, but first training at White Pond, which is really exciting. They're starting about 8:30 that morning, we're working with facilities and recreation, of course, our own Concord Fire Chief, and running for four hours, but really, truly a wonderful asset for us to be able to have a location that we can have the dive team come and train here. They do also train at Walden, but this is a different animal, you know, and it's, it's nice that they'll be familiar. We hope that they'll never need the ability to do it, but it's nice that there's some familiarity there. There's two new police officers that are starting this week, and they were both sworn in today down on the first floor, and a news and notice went out to that end. Mark Polly was hired as the full-time media technician for Minute Man Media Network. Mark Polly had worked part-time for us as a videographer. He comes from a pretty extensive IT background in corporate America, dealing with sort of the large-scale meetings and telecom, you know, industry, so he's very knowledgeable, and we're excited to have him on board. Last week, you may have noticed along Route 62, that the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail plantings along the side of Route 62, right by the Dunkin' Donuts and the junction there, were planted. DPW, this was a DPW, Green Thumbs, and Department of Planting and Land Management effort. Perennials and bulbs are going to also be planted along there and further into where the bridge over Yassavet is in the fall, and that will be courtesy of the Garden Club. And, let's see, we have the special election tomorrow for the middle school feasibility study, so that, we are finished setting up for that, and we are looking into a cybersecurity awareness grant, that's through Maya, which is our, our insurance company. And the summer reading program has begun at the library, began on June 1st, and it's running to 8:23. And this past weekend was the Friends book sale. They made a total of $26,903.75 in five hours.
Wow.
Which is up by $3,415 and change from last year. So they just continue to make just amazing, amazing progress, with very generous, folks are excited about it, and I would just like to remind everyone that the Jazz Festival is going to be this weekend, basically centered over at the visitor's center here in downtown Concord. The recreation department and the Jazz Fest folks have been working really hard on that, and the Rotary will again be providing the beer tent, there'll be lots of vendors there, food, and I think it's really going to be a good time, so.
And when is that, Kate?
That is on Saturday.
Are we still short? I know, I remember I, news and notices went out from Kari Tari that we were short of election or poll representation for the vote tomorrow.
She has a couple of temporaries that she's pulled in and doing things, but I see...
And we just got a memo from her with additional names on, from item number 20, and you guys have paper copies, and I assume new names there.
And kudos to her because she was really dealing to get those people interested, so that's, that's wonderful.
We'll sign them on the... Point the pointer, you can. Any questions for the acting town manager? I have one.
Yes.
And that is the bike paths issue. Is there a safety issue in that area, that little park?
In the Junction Village park? It depends on who you ask. I think there's been a lot of discussion about the signage that's there, as far as folks being told that they need to walk their bikes across there. There was a suggestion that the signs may be too high, and that they needed to be lower so they were closer to eye level, but that's actually regulated by the state of, because they don't want people to hit their faces on the signs if they're walking, or running, or jogging. So although it would be at eye level if you were riding a bike, not everybody may ride a bike, they might use the trail for jogging or walking, and so there's a, there's a standard of where we have to have it. So I think really what needs to happen is that if the sign says, please walk your bike, people need to comply with that. We find that a lot of that is best done by folks who are self-releasing. I think there's a way to say to people, you, did you know you were supposed to walk your bike? Be respectful and kind, and so it's new, and I think people don't necessarily know that, and they just zip along. But, you know, we talked about it this morning, and I think we're, the town is doing everything that we can to try to alert people that that's the desire.
Thank you very much. The other, next items, my remarks are very brief. I wanted to just reiterate the vote tomorrow, so please get out and vote. First, congratulations to all the Concord High School graduates, it was quite a, quite a celebration, and so now they're off to the next chapter, they're signing on to life. They're signing on live. We had a very successful Memorial Day set of ceremonies, one over Ride Out Park, and then one here downtown, both well-attended, and I was going to comment on the successful book sale, but Kate already did that. Place was packed, you know, so books were flying out of there. So that's all remarks I have. The next item on our agenda is approval of the RHS intermunicipal agreement, but Liz isn't here yet, so we'll...
Yeah, Liz Russ is actually attending Lincoln's town meeting, then Concord, then she's going to Acton, so she's doing the full gamut tonight, so...
We just put her first exception.
Sure, yeah.
She expects to be here around 8:15. When she shows up, we'll just go to that item next on the agenda. So next is a public hearing that's 10 minutes late. Minot folks, this is a change of manager, Colwin Management Inc., doing business as Residence Inn by Marriott Concord located at 320 Baker Ave.
Police Department today.
Go to the public hearing.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Welcome. Please introduce yourselves.
Megan Snick with Major Michael Zian Miller, attorney for applicant Colwin Management. With me tonight is Mark Combe. He is currently the Assistant General Manager. He's been in the industry for over 20 years. He's tipped and safe certified, and we welcome any questions you may have for him.
Very much for Colwin. Why don't you just tell us a little bit about your background?
Absolutely. Again, my name is Mark Combe. I'm the general manager at the Residence Inn in Concord. I took over the position about three months ago. Prior to that, I was the Assistant General Manager over at the Residence Inn in Fairfield Inn in Waltham. I opened that property up back in the middle of September. Prior to that, I've worked at a bunch of properties in Boston. AC Hotel in downtown Boston in the South End, which opened in March of 2018, and prior to that, I worked at the Seaport Hotel for about 12 and a half years as well, so I have an extensive background, too. I've also worked at Holiday Inn's, Crown Plaza's, you name it, so.
Where do you live?
I actually live in Waltham.
Waltham.
Yes, I do, yep.
Well, thank you. Andrew, I'll just note for the record that their application is complete.
Yep, application is complete, and the police department reviewed it, and the chief provided a memo. Board has paper copy of that. They did not find any issues, and they're reviewed.
Terrific. Are there any questions for anyone else of the applicant?
So what hours will you be on the premises?
My hours on the premises will really vary based upon business levels, so usually there in the morning till evening.
Okay.
And there is a requirement, maybe have, be present for 30 hours on the...
Yes.
Application is estimated 50.
Fifty, yeah, that's fine. Any other comments from the board? Are there any comments or questions from the public? Seeing none, then I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Is there any discussion of this application?
Sound like everything's in order?
I think it is. Seeing no questions, then I entertain a motion.
Okay. I move to approve the change of manager application from Colwin Management, Inc., doing business as Residence Inn by Marriott Concord located at 320 Baker Avenue. The new manager, Mark Estoll, must be engaged in the actual management of the licensed premises as their main occupation and must be present on the licensed premises for not less than 30 hours per week during the hours when alcoholic beverages are sold. Approval is contingent upon the ABCC approval.
Second.
Questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Glad you're here.
Thank you.
Be careful driving along Baker Ave.
Go the other way.
Thank you. Good evening.
Ms. LaFleur, you're up next. Review and approval of the 2019 general obligation bond and note issue.
Good evening. I'm Carrie LaFleur, Finance Director for the town. Last Thursday, we received competitive bids for our 2019 bond and note sale. The bond sale was for $6,435,000, and it's a 10-year issue, and the note sale was for $3 million. We received 10 bids on the bonds, and they were extremely competitive. We ranked the bids based on the true interest cost, and the winning bid was from UBS Financial Services Incorporated with the true interest cost of 1.43% going out six places, as shown in your report, so I'm not going to read all of those. And we received a premium of $1,024,000. The premium is used to pay for issuance costs, but then the remainder is used to resize the bond issue so that we're not borrowing as much money. So with the, after the premium, after the issuance costs were accounted for, we were able to resize the premium to $5,625,000, and that will save the median household $133 over the life of the issuance. Not a terribly large amount, but it was $108 last year, so we're moving in the right direction. I did want to mention, because people always ask, "Did we do well because we wear AAA?" So I was able to get some data on some other sales that happened the day before and the same day that we sold, and there is a chart and a graph on the last page. There were three other issues that sold either the day before or the same day. Brain Tree, which was a $32 million issue there, AA+, Marlboro is a AAA, but it's a Standard and Poor's AAA. That was a $10 million issue, and a $27 million issue from Somerville that was also AAA+. These were plotted out based on the yield, because we have such a, an aggressive repayment schedule, the true interest cost is not the best reflective measure of how well you did. The yield really is much better. And I don't know if what you have printed out in color, the graph, you really can see in years eight, nine, and 10, that the yield, we have a much better yield, but in the first seven years, it's pretty much tracking with these other issues that were very highly, they were high credit ratings as well. And sometimes the size of the issue actually impacts. You can have a larger issue that's not rated quite as high as a smaller issue, but there are investors that are looking for that size on that particular day. So I think we did very well, and again, able to save the taxpayers a small amount over the life of the bond issue. So then we also issued $3 million in notes, and interestingly enough, the winning bid was 1.70%, so a higher percentage rate than the 10-year. So I'm not an economist, but we had a flat yield curve for a number of months, and now it is inverted, so that's not the best sign for the economy overall.
It's like a progression to recession.
Yes. Good for us. We're happy to take this now, but a little concerned about what might happen in the future. So our, we did go through a rating, and our AAA was affirmed. I think maybe I mentioned that when I talked to you the last time. So the way the process works is I accept the lowest bids on behalf of the board, and then I bring it to you for formal approval. There is a form of vote that needs to be read in its entirety. I apologize in advance for that. And then there's a pile of documents that need to be signed by each of you as well.
Carrie, can I just ask one question? You always do such a wonderful job explaining all this. The difference between the premium rate and the resized premium rate is accounted for by...
Why do we receive the premium? Is that...
No, what's the...
No.
So the premium rate came in above a million?
Oh, okay. The difference...
And then the resized amount is eight?
Yes. Right. And so because we're not borrowing as much, the premium is reduced by a percentage as well. That always gets me, too. I ask the same question every year. I'm like, "Where did that million dollars go?"
All right, thank you. Okay.
It's all yours.
All right, so the public vote, and all of you will have to bear with me as I leave this. So, the vote of the select board. I, the clerk of the select board of the town of Concord, Massachusetts, the town, certified that a meeting of the board held June 3, 2019, of which meeting all members of the board were duly notified and at which a quorum was present. The following votes were unanimously passed, all of which appear upon the official record of the board in my custody. Voted that the sale of the $5,625,000 general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2019 bonds of the town dated June 20th, 2019, the bonds, to UBS Financial Services, Inc., at the price of $6,509,341.27, and accrued interest, if any, is hereby approved and confirmed. The bonds shall be payable on June 15 of the year and in the principal amounts and bear interest at the respective rates as follows. On year 2020, $775,000 at an interest rate of 5%. Year 2021, $730,000, 5% interest. 2022, $730,000, 5% interest. 2023, $720,000, 5% interest. 2024, $695,000, 5% interest. 2025, $500,000 at 5% interest. 2026, $500,000, 5% interest. 2027, 2028, 2029, all at $325,000, each at 5% interest. Further voted to approve the sale of $3 million, 2.05% general obligation bond anticipation notes of the town dated June 21, 2019, and payable June 19, 2020, the notes, to Jeffries LLC at par and accrued interest, if any, plus a premium of $10,175. Further voted that in connection with the marketing and sale of the bonds, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated May 20, 2019, and a final official statement dated May 30, 3019. Each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer, be and hereby ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. Further voted that in connection with the marketing and sale of the notes, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated May 20, 2019, and a final official statement dated May 30, 3019.
Yeah.
That's one.
I think those are typos.
Now, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer, be and hereby ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. Further voted that the town treasurer and the select board be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver continuing and significant events disclosure, undertakings in compliance with SEC Rule 15C-12 in such forms as may be approved by bond counsel to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the bonds and notes as applicable for the benefit of the holders of the bonds and notes from time to time. Further voted that we authorize and direct the town treasurer to establish post-issuance federal tax-compliant procedures and continuing disclosure procedures in such forms as the town treasurer and bond counsel deem sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place, review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax-exempt status of the bonds and notes and to comply with relevant security laws. Further voted that each member of the select board, the town clerk, and the town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes. I further certify that the votes were taken in a meeting open to the public, that no vote was taken by secret ballot, that a notice stating the place, date, time, and agenda for the meeting, which agenda included the adoption of the above votes, was filed with the town clerk and a copy thereof posted in a manner conspicuously visible to the public at all hours in or on the municipal building that the office of the town clerk is located, or if applicable, in accordance with an alternative method of notice prescribed or approved by the Attorney General as set forth in 94 CMR 29.03, Section 2B. At least 48 hours, not including Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays prior to the time of the meeting, and remain so posted at the time of the meeting that no deliberations or decision in connection with the sale of the bonds or notes were taken in executive session, all in accordance with general laws, Section 38, Sections 18 through 25 as amended in June through 2019. And I'll just note for the record that the previous dates I read should have said May 30, 2019, May 30, 2019, in the fifth and sixth paragraphs of Page 1 of the vote.
Second.
Any discussion?
Let's recover from it.
Again. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie, thanks very much. And that's a decision review, settle the vote.
We're inviting them to watch.
All right. Thank you. The next, the next item of business on the agenda is the long-range plan next steps. So as you recall, at our last meeting, we looked up the summary of the high and low priorities for various sections of the long-range plan, and I think we have a way to sort of unbundle this to occupy ourselves at subsequent meetings. So one of the, one of the items was affordable housing, and I will report now that Linda and I have meetings scheduled with our state representatives, Kevin DeWey and Mike Barrett, on June 11 to talk to them about ensuring to get this process moving along. So I say that because for each of the items we've talked about, what we want to do is now turn, turn these items that we've established as high priority into action. And so following up with that, as you'll recall, I've asked Carrie to put together a draft in anticipation of the discussion of long-range feasibility of capital plans, and at our next board meeting on June 17, we'll have a draft of that. And in addition, I have invited on our behalf the superintendent of schools, the finance director, of course Kate will be here with us already, and Dean Banfield, who is the chair of the finance committee, to talk to us and get us started on trying to understand how we would best accomplish one of these goals that was a high priority for finance. And so we'll have that discussion, and we will then determine how we want to proceed. But asking Carrie to do this, one would pass for this decree committee that would actually have the responsibility for putting this together, so hopefully we'll have a draft of that to look at if that's a pass.
Are you, are you looking for a draft committee charge?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sure. And this will be, Carrie, you're probably the first one done, at least here, and it's a very, the committee charges are fairly structured in terms of the way they're laid out, so you can, you can look at almost anyone.
Right.
And get kind of the general structure, and then, as you know, you already provided a number of specific points in your responsible long-range plan and the select board goals that would be the real basis for what the committee charge would look like. So we'll have that with us after we've heard from the superintendent of finance, director of the existing town manager, and the chair of the finance committee. Our job will be to figure out what we want to do. So that's the sentencing.
And what about the other areas on the long-range plan?
Just hold tight, Carrie. I don't have a good answer for you, but for Susan was the one who had done the work on economic vitality. And one of the items that was included as a high priority was trying to think about a committee of citizens that we could get together that could sort of wrestle this problem to the ground a little bit and come back to us with specific actions that we might do. And so what I would, the suggestion is following this pattern, then to ask Susan for our next meeting, which has come, it's July, two weeks from June 17, so probably to the first... first.
I'll go first.
If you could come prepared with a draft of what this committee might look like, and what I will try to do is I will try to invite on our behalf somebody maybe from the Chamber of Commerce, somebody from the Business Partnership, to come talk to us as well. And then after we've heard from them, when I discharge and amend it, I will, but we would have that to do. And then, transportation, I don't know exactly what to do.
Wait, can I just ask a question about, the other part of it was more about the tourism, the tourism piece, which is, I don't see that as falling under that charge of that.
Well, I think, personally, I think it could. I think it's got this vitality as I think a couple of dimensions. One is economic development.
Yeah.
And the other is sort of tourism. Those are the two things that sort of drive what we do. So.
Kate, is there still a search going on for tourism?
So the ad will close, I believe, on Friday, and then Ryan, Kate, and I will go through in the hopes to find, hopefully eight is our goal, find eight qualified candidates for first-round interviews. Last time we received 30, it was 31 applications, and we interviewed nine. And actually, one didn't show up, so we ended up with eight. So hopefully they'll all show up this time.
So I think this mini's work would be a perfect, good start for somebody coming in.
Yeah.
So I would include it.
Okay.
And I think there's really, there's the economic development, which you can think of as large-scale economic development, something maybe that might show up on the StarNet plan, I wonder whether we get to that. And then there's sort of the retail stock in various districts in town, and they're quite different. Then there's the tourism part of it. So try to address that, and that'll give us a chance to get something going in that direction.
And Mike, you mentioned who you might invite to that meeting. Can we include members of the cultural districts, the West Conference Junction Cultural and the College Center Junction? And I think that kind of group can kind of tie the tourism and the economic vitality together really well.
Good idea. I will do that.
And what about the parks? Since they're such a major player in this?
Yeah.
Great, good. I will talk to Mr. Dunn, the Superintendent. It's good suggestions. Thanks.
So in terms of transportation, you know, it's something that touches on most of these other issues. It's how we move the tourists around Concord in part. It is going to determine, you know, economic and other opportunities. And the list of high priority issues here is almost, I don't know what to call it, it's not a hodgepodge in terms of unrelated, but they don't fall under any one department's Aegis. We have some planning, some public work, some, you know, some council aging, you know, it's a whole range. So it almost begs the question, do we need to create its own committee to focus on the ideas put forth and then perhaps others? Or not? I mean, I don't, I'm not, but I don't think it's going to get addressed by randomly spreading it.
Well, we've got three items to chat. Capital feasibility, I'm not quite sure if it's as directly connected as affordable housing, economic vitality.
No, those two are clearly transportation.
So what we might think about doing is, once we've got a little bit of progress on these two, we can really attempt to make sure that there's a transportation component to it. So, okay, we're going to do something in economic vitality. What's the transportation?
Oh, it's cool.
Because, for example, one I can think of for the viability downtown is that a lot of trouble getting people to work here because they don't live in town and it's kind of long. So if we're going to try to increase the local vitality of the retailers, what are we doing about that transportation problem?
Right. And I, that's one way to approach it. How do we, how do we make sure we don't miss opportunities that don't through, for instance, today there was a meeting at Fort Devens to discuss the state of the Pittsburgh line. It was a general purpose meeting, but that, and we also know that transportation is one of our new, tending to be, is chief issues and chief interests. So my concern is that as these committees move forward, yes, they're going to, they're going to tee up the pieces that would be transportation focused, but if crosstown connect is moving, who's going to oversee making sure that we take advantage of?
What's the suggestion? You've got the problem.
Right, right. And that's where I've said I wonder if it deserves its own, you know, the problem is there isn't a staff member that oversees in the same way that, for instance, if this was the schools, there's a transportation department. We don't have that in the town.
I think you're making a really good point, and I think part of it might get addressed when we're talking about a possible economic vitality coordinator, which maybe this person would be partly on transportation and partly on economic vitality, I have no idea. But the other thing that I'm thinking about is, I was really impressed with Stephen Crane's experience in transportation, one of his strongest suits. So I'm really eager for him to start and for him to give us some feedback and some input on all of this. And I'm a little bit reluctant to, even though transportation I think is a really important issue, but I kind of don't want to start without his input either, so.
Well, we're not going to, I think that's a good point. We're not going to be in a position anytime very soon to really put something in place. So why don't we get these underway and let's continue to think about that. And, you know, it's also, you mentioned there's no real department, but Marcia in planning does a lot with hurricane and things like that, and Kate.
And she's already identified doing more with crosstown connect for this year in her goals. I'm also wondering about our Sustainability Director. I see a piece that maybe she could be taking on. Don, you're just looking at me. Jeez.
No, no, no. It's, I think it would be, it's, seems to be the current theme where we have sort of an orphaned type of initiative.
Do you speak from experience?
We throw it at the Kates, speaking for a friend. So I think, you know, we, Marcia and I have been working pretty closely on the crosstown connect initiative, and in the next couple of weeks, I think we'll be bringing forward something to the Select Board for more public discussion on that. And then I would also remind the Select Board just that we have a pretty robust council on aging transportation system, where we have three vans on the road now that are running constantly with two full-time drivers. And so we have an entire dispatch center for that. So I think because that only services the 60-plus, sometimes, you know, that can be lost in the shuffle, but I think we can take a lot of, a lot of what they're doing, a lot of their procedures, and a lot of their onboarding, and just sort of port that over into the other 60 population or any age population.
Well, maybe we should, and do we still have the ride part of charge?
The ride, yes, we do.
The ride?
Yes, yeah.
So maybe it would be a good idea if what we did next is get an inventory of what exactly is going on.
So you read our mind, that's coming.
What?
But you'll have to wait two weeks. Sorry.
We'll wait, you won't remember that if you.
Oh, all right.
That's a good idea.
I don't know, like, no, I didn't say it.
Well, but I mean, next meeting we've got capital planning teed up, but, you know, if we could get that from the town and if you could spend your time sort of trying to articulate what the transportation issues are, so we'd have something that says, here's what's happening, here's what capability we have, and here's what the issues are. Maybe that could be our first step along that line.
I almost see that the transportation issue could be one piece of the agenda within the economic vitality. And I'd like to ask that we allow enough time on these agendas for a really good discussion. We might be, you know, more than an hour, an hour and a half into it. If you're going to bring all these folks in, you know, we might have the park service involved, we might have council aging involved, I don't know, who all the players are, but there's a lot of them. And I think it's going to take a while to start hashing them all out.
Well, you're right, and, you know, it always seems like town is compressed for these meetings.
Right.
But that's one of the advantages of getting a committee structure, so they can take off on their own and then come back to us, you know, with a little tighter.
I mean, committee might choose to do a public hearing on the.
Well, they have it, yeah.
Right, so my point is, there would be a public discussion forum specific to it.
Right. But I also feel that with these big issues, and the same with the capital planning, I just want to make sure that we have enough time, that everybody feels their voices are heard, you know, even if we end up having many, and they have another public hearing, I think that's all right.
Okay. Let's try to.
Getting input as we put it together, and then definitely getting input as a progress.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not too concerned about if we put a committee together, them getting input, because we can write into the charge, public hearings.
Right.
And committees are really pretty good about that anyway. All right, let's, so I think we've got a little bit of work on for each of these issues. So, okay, thank you very much. So next, amend the nuclear metal star net property.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, Liz Rust has arrived, so.
Please come up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, yes. No, I know you were running the gamut today.
No, I did the act in selectment, so I'm all yours.
In that case, go to the back.
We're at agenda item number nine, review and approve the RHSO intermunicipal amendment.
Liz.
Thank you for calling.
Sure, I have some paper, I think, are you putting up the?
Yep, I'm just doing it right now.
Okay.
So, this is paper of what you'll see on the screen coming up.
Do you do the clicker, or do I do the clicker?
You should have got a code word beforehand.
We'll just do the wink nod, right. Okay, so, good evening, hi, I'm Liz Rust. I'm the Director of the Regional Housing Services Office and a resident here in Concord at 201 Commonwealth Avenue.
Thank you.
I'm here to provide a general RHSO, that's what we call the Regional Housing Services Office, a general update and overview, and really here to vote, to ask your vote to sign the FY '20 intermunicipal agreement amendment. So the RHSO started in 2011, and I do this overview, just not, maybe everyone's really familiar, I know some of you have heard this a few times. So it was established in 2011 after three years of working collaboratively with the other founding member towns and MAPC. So the effort started in 2009, actually, and MAPC, we got three grants through them. So it took a long time from concept to implementation. There was no model for this, and it was really brought about through the town leadership from, as I say, the founding members of Lexington, Concord, Lincoln, someone else, and Subbury. I don't really know who, who else is abutting there to Bedford. And so, as a way to provide administrative support for the affordable housing that's already built on the ground, that was really the primary focus. And that's where we've stayed as our core service. We do a little bit more than that, which we'll get into. And so you can see here, there are eight member towns, and they pay into this model, and it's proved to be a sustainable model, where we've had two communities add, two communities withdraw, we've had staff retire, we've had new staff added, we've moved lead communities, and we've moved offices, and we're still here providing the same service. So, so I think it's working.
Liz, you said this was unique, this is, is it still unique in the Commonwealth? Or is anybody smart enough to make this idea?
So I think, so this, one of the MMA Innovation Awards back some years ago, and I think now there are probably 20 other municipalities involved in some kind of regional housing group. And there's a lot of interest in this, and in fact, I've been asked to speak at the Housing Institute later this week on forming regional housing collaborations. So people find that they have more housing responsibilities as a town than they know what to do with. You know, it's a very technical field and looking for how to solve that. It's not enough activity where you would hire a dedicated person for that, and even having staff on board, keeping them up to date with the ever-changing requirements and expertise and the state-level programs and all of that. And so this is just a slice of the work plan, and I'm not really going to go through this, but we do a lot of, well, we do this. We spend, you can see where monitoring is a big cornerstone of the activities, and again, we do a lot of local support. And here in Concord, we provide support across the board, to this board specifically, to Town Meeting, we support the CHDC with helping them with their, with their meetings and, you know, their changes in their programs, we support Marcia and her department, and we really work through Marcia. We have an advisory committee, and each town has a member there, and that's really our direct reporting relationship, but we provide support to the town in general. We helped a lot with Town Meeting and the Affordable Housing Funding Committee and, you know, those kinds of things.
Who is our member from Concord?
Marcia.
Okay.
And I think I saw you probably two weeks ago for the home program. I didn't even mention that, that's a big, it's a big slice of what we do, help administer that program for Concord and get those funds and put those funds to work for you. Just in terms of the member communities, there's a maximum of nine municipalities, as stated in the IMA. We always are in dialogue with other neighboring communities. We would like to move to nine communities. We're always looking for more hours, I'll just sort of say that. There are four of us, and we work a total of, I think, 65 to 70 hours a week combined. So we're about a little bit less than two FTEs, like one and two-thirds FTE, something like that. And the nine, the nine maximum was set in place so that we wouldn't lose focus and support to any particular community. It was thought that we could have enough, but every community wants to make sure that we are dedicated to them, so we don't want to have too many. But for this year coming up in FY '20, Burlington is withdrawing, they've provided their termination letter, and Lincoln is very close to joining. They were hoping to get everything in place for 7-1, but that didn't quite happen. But that's been approved by the town managers, including Chris, as well as the advisory committee. So you might be seeing some paperwork around that. And again, you wouldn't really notice that, I mean, it would be to your benefit in that it spreads the fixed costs around more communities.
Liz, I'm just wondering if you have told the Select Board, what is the ideal number of hours that you would see if you had nine communities, that you would see in terms of FTEs? Right now you have two, are you looking to double that?
So we have four people who are contracted in, we've never done that per se. We all have other things that we do with our time, so we're not available to really be full-time. But two of the people have children in school, so that their schedule But two of the people have children in school, so that their schedule is, you know, I got to be home at three o'clock when I come early in these days, and so there's some room, and different communities come in with different requirements for hours. So we haven't ever set out for a number of hours. And so this is a lot of numbers here, speaking of numbers, numbers of hours and dollars for different years and, you know, but you'll see this in a more abridged form in the IMA amendment. The founders wanted to be sure that every year we got in front of every Board of Selectmen, and so they structured the IMA so that every selectman signs it every year. Even though it's a three-year term, this makes sure that everyone is intentionally up to speed and involved and committing. So the budget was included in Exhibit B, I think it is, and in the IMA amendment, and so we do update it every year. And so we're just completing our eight years, and we thank you for your continued support, especially here in Concord, you have done a great job with making sure that we state a strong model, and we think it's a good compliance monitoring piece. I think that we all know more about the affordable housing and feel more secure in knowing the state of it. When I work with other communities that don't monitor their housing, I'm always taken a little bit of back, you know, people spend so much time and effort permitting that housing just to make sure that, you know, it stays for its intended use, it seems like a good, you know, a good thing to do. It is efficient use of resources, we have best practices, and we're able to share those, and then the regional approach is always, is always helpful, I think, that you benefit from that as well.
Liz, since most of the focus here is on existing housing, and they sort of, the way it's been described, or not, housing that comes into, used by the town, is there going to be an impact, we know that there are these two very large proposals going forward, one on the Interacton line, one in Sudbury, will that change hours needed?
Well, we had the advisory committee meeting today, actually, and we had a part of that as a community exchange, we have some projects that we're working on together, and so Acton talked about their project, and Sudbury was there to talk about theirs. So there's a place for the planners to share information in that forum, so that's always helpful. And Wayland was there, there's a project between Sudbury and Wayland, and then there's Weston and Wayland, and so that there can be some sharing of how to mitigate any particular concerns, and some of those ideas came up. So anything that's specific, we have that kind of forum, and I think we've done some to, to make that a welcome conversation and dialogue. And so I just brought this back up, we have that slice called local support, and that's really where we spend time on, you know, projects that aren't built yet.
Thanks to your colleagues, all the hard work, you're on our behalf, greatly appreciated, and also for all the support you've given us over the, this year in particular, and our efforts to try and improve our affordable housing in Concord, it's greatly appreciated. Are there any questions?
I just noticed that in the amendment, it looked like the, with Burlington withdrawing, and until Lincoln comes out, it looks like the amendment we're approving today, the percentage increase for fees for Concord was about 1%. So, I mean, that's doable, that's doable. And then the other thing is, I hope in the discussion this morning with the planning group, given they were talking about the developments, that cross-town connect and transportation mitigation issues came up, because we certainly made a point of that, and maybe future discussions that can be.
That's a good topic, mm-hmm.
Yeah, that would be one way to at least mitigate, because the traffic is going to come through Concord.
Mm-hmm, yep, yeah, good idea. I had a quick conversation with Linda earlier about some ideas for going forward in FY20, and in this, in this group of communities, there are, half of them have affordable housing trusts set up, and we've done a lot of support with them, so I have a lot of information about those as well as other communities, and would glad, be glad to share that when the appropriate time comes up.
Great.
Let's start us now.
Thank you.
Just need to approve.
I move to approve the FY20 RHSO intermunicipal agreement amendment as presented.
For second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Liz, thanks for talking.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is public comments.
Nuclear metals.
Nice try. You amended the nuclear metals star met property, it was included in our package. Like there were a couple of, there were a couple of amendments, one was the term of office, it was over two years, and then to be able to report back to us in September.
And I was also wondering if we wanted to amend in the first, at the end of the first paragraph where it says that the consent decree could be finalized in the fall of 2018? Well, Marcia said, you know, we're now looking at 2019, but that there was movement, so.
So we add.
Well, we have to, we have to change that, because we're past 20.
Right, right.
So we change that to 2019.
Right.
Andrew, you got that?
Change that.
We said 2019.
In the fall of 2019.
I have, I know this, we've talked about this before, but we are in, it is June.
Right.
I'm wondering if September 1st is just.
I have the same thought, I think so, too.
And that date was last year, so.
So maybe we could amend that to October 1st and give them an additional month, do you think?
I was asking November, December.
Yeah.
It says the fall, it doesn't say.
Oh, it says September 1st, 2019.
Oh, 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 sorry.
Well, I was thinking about this, and I think November 1st would give them two more months, but also give us enough on the warrant, which is what we're trying to do.
So without objection, then, we'll change that to November 1st, all right?
And then, going back to the membership, at one point we talked about maybe membership being limited to one year, because this may be a committee that has a limited timeframe because of the EPA consultant time that's available? This was that committee that.
Right, and how long was that, do we?
They have 100, they have 100 hours, so it clearly will be done within this year, and Marcia's, their first meeting is on June 20th. So I don't know how we want to look at that.
Well, it still may be the case that after they've completed this first task, or their work for them to follow up, so I'd.
What about the.
Leave that, I think.
Okay, okay.
Any other comments?
I have a question about the first paragraph. So in 2015, Concord Town Meeting voted to authorize the select board to acquire the property. So would the property be acquired after the consent decree is written up, or after all the cleanup from the consent decree is finished? Or do we even know? I mean.
Well, we don't know, but in addition to those two things, there are also some liens against the property.
Okay.
And I think when we, the last time we talked about it, that there was some reluctance to assume ownership of the property until these liens had gotten squared away. So I think.
In addition to the cleanup?
In addition to the cleanup. So I think I have had any conversations in the last year on the status of the liens, but they were substantial. We could take the property by.
Amendment.
Amendment, we could take the property because taxes haven't been paid on it.
I see.
But if we take the property, it's our property.
Right, right, right.
And it becomes, it's environmental problems.
Right.
Don't think we would be liable for that, because I recall under the WR Grace property, if you take something by eminent domain, you're not, you don't, you're not liable. But if we took it for taxes, I don't know what to.
Right, well, the reason I'm asking is, it's just a way worded here, it said, it says in 2015, Concord Town Meeting voted to authorize the select board to acquire the property, it appears the consent decree could be finalized in the fall of 2018, almost like connects those two things.
So it could say at some point in the future.
Yeah, yeah.
Acquire the property at some point.
Yeah, that would be really helpful.
I think the committee, the 2229 committee, would, they have, they have made the point of us acquiring the property, so I think having some language in there like your suggestion, suggesting that is a good thing to do, because at some point, we've got either, what's the program here?
Right, it's just needs a little bit of wordsmithing.
Okay, so Linda, can you wordsmith it?
Yes, I know. I'm just suggesting to acquire the property at some point in the future, and I think that that then disconnects the two sentences that you will insert about it.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? So the motion is then as amended, right? Should we state your motion?
I want to amend the Nuclear Metals Star Met Property Reuse Planning Committee chart as discussed and amended in this meeting.
For second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five to nothing, now it's serious comments, right? Other comments? And there was just, one additional change made to that, which Linda can give you the language on our fifth meeting. Good evening.
Good evening. Suzanne K., 366 S. Brook Road. I just wanted to start by thanking you very much for having Anderson Krieger come in to do the open meeting law training. I found that we had some extensive time personally looking at the open meeting law requirements, and I found it particularly fascinating to hear the emphasis that this attorney placed upon stopping public comments, the right to stop public comments, controlling the public's access, not talking about making the open meeting law complaints public knowledge or reviewing them publicly, which is actually in the open meeting law. But I think you did what I think you always do, which is trying to do the correct thing by bringing the lawyers up front. What I did find, sir, is you were one of the speakers at the Concord Effective Town Governance Workshop on September 23rd, 2017, which was recorded, that yes, definitely, because we listened to you and we appreciate it, we watched the video, you were very articulate, and you made clear the points about many subjects on the open meeting law that were not emphasized, actually, by the lawyers tonight, I thought you were a little bit clearer. And for example, and I'm quoting you, "If it's not on the agenda, you ought not to be talking about it." This is a reference to legal requirement, the public bodies must only talk about subjects listed on the agenda, it seems pretty obvious, that wasn't anything what these lawyers discussed. Yet apparently, for more than a year, since you made that comment, sir, and relative to open meeting law complaint number four, which is the May 16th one, that I believe most likely prompted the lawyers to be here, one through three were probably in part. It's interesting that everything that you discussed at that September meeting, you violated with those lawyers next to you. And it's just really ironic to sit here and listen to the lawyers talk about how to make things more opaque, not transparent. And we're very grateful, sir, knowing even that your lawyers are pushing you to make things very secret, that we have, that you allowed the PEG Access Committee, which is now select board run, is not independent, to videotape that. So I thank you for that, because that's actually why we're pushing for that. So although tonight's instruction to you by town council on the open meeting law, we felt was quite farcical, since they sat next to you, we felt it was quite ludicrous to sit and hear that, and we're not sure how, that they haven't been complicit in this willful ignorance and that the select board seems to have displayed in the violations, repeated violations for over a year of the open meeting law, and how they could be sufficient experts to explain to you. So we're very hopeful that the Attorney General does follow through on looking into this complaint, because we think that this is really a bit of a, it's ironical and farcical for tonight, but thank you very much for allowing it to be recorded. And for anybody interested, we did submit documents, and we would like it noted, the documents have been submitted specifically for a public records request that list links to every single time that this, that agendas haven't been followed and that open meeting law issues have been violated by not discussing the repeated request for information and by the filing of the open meeting law, sir, so that has been filed, I'm referring to it specifically, and we would love to see it on the website if possible, please, Mr. Martin.
Address, select board.
As of this afternoon, I still cannot find a single one of the open meeting law complaints, the four open meeting law complaints, which we filed on the town website. These are matters of great interest to the public, to find out how their select board is behaving, because by so thoroughly hiding information, the public has no idea that there's a real and very serious problem with the select board. And at every step of the way, we've seen you hide the information, so people simply don't know the questions that need to be asked.
And that's what an enormous number of people will hear about.
Thank you very much for your comments. Any other public comment? Can you hear us on your court, Susan?
On the 28th of May, I went to the Trails Committee, and that group, members of the group actually walk the trails and report back, it's very, it's a fun committee. Yeah, and on, you know, conditions if things need to, need attention, if the brochures are not in the kiosk, and so they're a very hands-on group. And that was followed the same day, later on, the Conservation Restriction Stewardship Committee, which has, their charge is that each of the members, over the course of like 18 to 24 months, each of the conservation properties is physically walked by one of those members, and they say, oh, you know, the landscapers putting brush or the next, you know, to report on what's happened. So that is also a very hands-on committee, sorry, and they're in need of a member. So if anybody listening or watching is interested, if you're an outdoor-type person and you can read maps and GPS or GIS system, or you want to learn that, they would love to have you, you can find their meeting schedule on the town website, and again, it's a very hands-on group. I went to the Cemetery Committee also, which is another fun group, oddly enough, and they are also in need of a member, and in that case, if you're interested in history, there's tons of it over there, as you know. But on June 16th, there's going to be a rededication of the Melvin Memorial at 2:00 PM, there'll be a reception here afterwards, and the 16th is a significant date in that family's history, because it was the date that Asa Melvin died in Petersburg. He was, there are three brothers, he was, I can't remember which order, but June 16th, June 16th was also the date of the original dedication of the, of the Melvin Memorial. Then the friends of Sleepy Hollow are contributing some funds and working with them to identify trees, native, species native to Massachusetts, they're wanting to put tags on them so people know. And then I went with many of the rest of us to the, the thank you party for the gift the Bukas', Nancy Bukas gave to the Audubon Society of the land of flooding on the river and part of Brewster's Farm. So it was, that was great, and that's what I have to do this time.
I haven't attended any committee meetings since the last meeting, but I do want to remind the public that we're still looking for members for the Nuclear Metals Star Met Property Reuse Planning Committee that we discussed tonight, and we're particularly looking for people with experience in land use planning. And we're particularly looking for people with experience in land use planning. And economic vitality is given us downwind in terms of the future. But that's one of the topics that will be considered for this property, so. Put that in your.
Okay. My menu. Yeah.
I don't have anything.
I also, the Land Conservation Trust, thank you to the Bucuses for their gift of the rest of William Brewster, the first president of Mass Audubon's land, completing the, the connection of all of the lands, including Balls Hill, which the town purchased also with the Land Trust's help, um, some years ago. And that was a, just a wonderful event. It was great to see all the folks who, who support that organization and support the town. Also attended the League Women Voters Annual Meeting, which while also not a committee, is an important body in town. And had the opportunity to listen to the new, the League's new executive director, whose last, his full name is?
Queeter. Michelle Queeter.
Michelle Queeter. And she is a dynamo. I look forward to seeing what she's doing with the state league. My regular committees did not meet, so that's what I have.
Thank you. I attended the Tax Fairness Committee meeting. And they are still working hard to, as you know, that we passed a senior exemption that lasts for three years. They need to go back to legislature to either extend it. And if they don't, it lapses, but they want to go back with some amendments to it that won't affect, it doesn't affect the substance of the law, or probably have to come to town meetings, but to make it a little bit easier to administer, it's very complicated to administer. So that was our primary agenda item. I'm a member of the Mass Municipal Association Fiscal Policy Committee, and we, we met last Tuesday. The main topic on the agenda there was proposed changes to chapter 70 law. And we heard presentations from two points of view about that. It was very interesting. And then third, I attended the school, the joint meeting of the school committee. And they had the usual, a very full and interesting meeting with a lot of recognitions. But the item that I wanted to bring to your attention that they talked about was they had a presentation by members of the Massachusetts Association of Regional Schools. And it was a presentation about the Concord-Carlisle Regional School District Agreement, which has not been amended since 1974. And so the question before the school committee was, what are we going to do about this? Are they going to try to do it? It's complicated. It's not, well, of course, because there's a few housekeeping things that probably can get fixed without touching the primary agreement. I'm understanding incentive assertion, correct me if I'm wrong. My understanding is once you do something substantively, then you have to bring the entire agreement into compliance with whatever the rules and regulations are. So they'll be addressing that at future meetings and trying to figure out. For example, the, the thing that was brought, I think, to the attention is we have now a way of calculating Concord and Carlisle's share of the annual budget, which is based on population. But as you'll recall from the last two town meetings, that can swing rather substantially because it's a single year. You take a census in October, and that's the assessment for the year. And so you could revisit that. And you could do something like have it be a three-year, four-year rolling average, which would smooth some of the stuff out. There was also a question raised by the folks from the association about representation on the committee. Populations have changed. Do we have the correct representation on the regional district? So stay tuned. They propose, they showed what a typical committee might look like if you decided to do that. And I bring it to your attention here because they suggested that members of the select board would be on such committee even though it's independent. So I think state chair, and we'll see how the, how the school committee deals with that. That is a very interesting topic. And that's all I have.
I did want to just amend my, my list by also adding, I met with a group of largely Concord citizens with Tammy Gouvea in Acton today. It was a climate change discussion. And it was a summary of the bills that she's co-sponsored, there's 16 of them, the House. Specific was Jen Benson's Carbon Tax Initiative, which seems to have significant legs this year. And while she's not our representative, her bill seems to be moving much, much more quickly than Senator Barrett's has. And then there are a number of other items. The end focus, the point that I had at that meeting was that in order to communicate better with the constituency, she's going to try and come up with some kind of calendaring process on her end so that when people want to find out what's moving, where it is, they'll have greater access to it. She wasn't making any promises, and I don't want a promise for her because it's not a small task, one, her one staff members. And, but I thought that was.
State chair, right?
Yep.
Great. Thank you. I just have to hand this to ladies correspondent, so we'll go next to committee.
This one, excuse me. Letter for you, so.
And is that included in our? Is it included in the package? So I would entertain a motion to authorize a chair to write a congratulatory note to the most recent uncle Scott.
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And I believe that's, isn't that Jen Carps' son? Yes. Yeah. This is Ben Parker.
Great. Congratulations. Great achievement. Committee nominations.
I nominate Charles Parker of 105 Chestnut Street to the Middle School Building Committee, Stephen Ledoux of 89 Hay Springs Road to the Minuteman Regional Technical High School Committee.
Thank you. Now let me say then that we then have the building committee fully staffed. So Susan, if you could be in contact with them and convene their first meeting so that they can elect their, their chair, get on with their business, that would be appreciated. Committee appointments.
David?
I just wanted to look at the appointments for the Nuclear Metals Committee. It'll be two years, so that will be to May 31st, 2021. Do you have a date in there? So I just want to clarify, we do, it'll be two years, correct?
So it's Steve Ng and Carl.
Yeah.
Right? So we just add 2021 to the end of that. Thank you, Andrew. The committee appointments.
David Bell of 1657 Monument Street to the Public Ceremonies and Celebrations Committee for a term to expire May 31, 2024. Jeffrey Walton of, or Jeffrey Walton of 42 Buckmaster Drive to the West Concord Advisory Committee as an associate member for a term to expire May 31st, 2022. Pam Rockwell of 1810 Main Street, Paul Bame of 11 Ridgewood Road, Gary Kleiman of 57 Central Street, Stephen Ng of 12 Dalton Road, and Carl Seidman of 93 Wright Road to the Nuclear Metals Starment Property Reuse Planning Committee, all their terms to end May 31st, 2021. Frank Hannan of 147 Prairie Street, Pat Nelson of 52 Cottage Lane, Matt of 139 Bellknot Street, Don Gurriel of 57 Brister's Hill Road, Chris Popoff of 35 Pleasant Street, Timothy Halt of 20 South Meadow Ridge, Heather Bowd of 33 Alden Road, the school committee, as school committee rep, and Court Booth of 144 Wright Road as school committee rep to the Middle School Building Committee.
Second.
And there's no term on there?
Until project completion.
Until project completion.
There's one more?
Vince Carlson of 34 Evert Street to the PEG Access Advisory Committee for a term to expire May 31st, 2022.
Now I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And town manager reappointments.
With select board approval. Mary Beth Barker of 51 Birch Street and Merle Schwartz of 1471 Main Street to the Commission on Disability for terms to expire May 31st, 2022.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The appointment of election officers. We received a memo from the town's part, which was on June 12th. So is there a motion?
To appoint the election officers? You want me to read them?
Sorry, you want me to read?
As, as listed in the June 3rd, 2019 memo from Carrie, Mary, Carrie, our town clerk.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye. With gratitude.
With gratitude.
Definitely.
Absolute gratitude. And let me just say before we adjourn that while I, while I mentioned the Memorial Day services that we had right out in downtown, I should have added our thanks to the Ceremonies Committee for organizing. They also really ran quite smoothly and they did a great job. So thanks to them. And now I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So who? Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Good evening.